All right. Going ahead and call the Wednesday, June 5th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order. Commissioner Bartow, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Could everyone please stand?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Staff, roll call, please.
All commissioners are present this evening with the exception of Commissioner Lowry, who is excused.
Oh, great, thank you. Okay, public comments. This is the time we'll take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. You have any public comments? Nope, see none. Okay, moving on, staff requests for continuances.
None this evening.
None this evening, okay. Consent items. Item, um, let's see, item number one, meeting minutes of May 23, 2024. Would anybody from the audience wish to comment on this item? Okay, see none. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Lincoln?
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, call for a vote. Commissioner Harris, who has the second? Great, okay. Public hearing items, item number two, the Malarkey's Irish Pub Outdoor Dining Patio Edition, PA 2024-001. The site location is 3001, 3009, and 3011 Newport Boulevard. Please, staff, hi, we have a presentation, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Elmore. Oscar Orozco here with the Planning Commission presenting Planning Application 2024-0001 for Malarkey's Irish Pub Outdoor Dining Patio Edition. Site's located at 311, 3001, and 3009 Newport Boulevard on the corner of 30th Street and Newport Boulevard. The site is identified there in yellow and is developed with an existing restaurant known as Malarkey's with a onsite parking lot. The site also includes a existing offsite parking easement, which is identified in green to the north of the site there. Site is located within the neighborhood commercial zoning district identified there in pink. And the mix of different zoning districts in the area include that of visitor-serving commercial identified in red and mixed-use Canary Village identified in the salmon color and residential identified in that tan color there. The existing operations for that Malarkey site include a Planning Commission approval from the 70s to establish the restaurants with alcohol sales and late hours. In the 90s, there was a amendment approved by the Planning Commission to extend the hours of operation. And most notably, in recent time, there was a approval by the Community Development Director to approve a emergency limited-term permit for an outdoor dining patio during COVID on a temporary basis, which is now being proposed to become permanent. Here's an image of that existing temporary outdoor dining patio during COVID. The proposed project request includes a conditional use permit for the remodel of an existing restaurants and construction of a new outdoor dining patio with inclusion of late hours, alcohol service, and the request to waive one parking space. In addition, there is a coastal development permit request for a new patio in the coastal zone and a tentative parcel map for the purposes of adjusting the property lines for the new proposed outdoor dining patio. The existing site is comprised of three parcels identified in the three separate shaded colors. The red lines depict the existing property lines. As proposed, the project would be placing a outdoor dining patio over top an existing property line. Therefore, in the project request, there is a proposed change to the existing lot lines to accommodate that outdoor dining patio. So with that revision, the site then looks like this with the revised lot lines to accommodate the proposed patio outlined in blue. Therefore, the proposed outdoor patio would be fully encompassed within the boundaries of that parcel and not crossing a property line, which is typically not permitted by the municipal code. Here are some elevations of the proposed project outlined in blue just to identify the look, the side view of the outdoor dining patio. Part of the outdoor dining patio is open as shaded in that blue color. However, the project does include the inclusion of tempered glass and a solid roof structure for the purposes of sound attenuation. The proposed project includes some revisions to the interior portion of the existing restaurant. So outlined here in blue are some additional seats and tables that are being added. In addition, the relocation of the existing bathroom for the men's bathroom is being located here with a small photo booth. And a addition of a new private dining area located at the rear of the floor plan is being converted from what was previously an office space. And then, of course, the outdoor dining patio itself, which includes several tables and chairs, some booths, and a new bar located closer towards the interior of the establishment. Existing site with inclusion of the proposed project requires a total of 47 spaces. However, the site only provides a total of 46 spaces, therefore, there is a deficit of one space and is, as part of the project, there is a request to waive that one space through the conditional use permit. In support of that waiver, the applicant provided a parking study completed by RK to support the request of the waiver. The parking study concluded that there is sufficient onsite parking available at all times, including peak hours. For instance, the peak demand during the study results in 43 spaces out of the 46 spaces being occupied. In addition, the parking study was reviewed by the city traffic engineer, and a condition of approval has been added to the project to ensure that there are 11 bicycle stalls included as part of the waiver for the parking. Project itself has some operational characteristics such as hours of operation, which are requested from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. daily for both the interior and outdoor patio. This includes a limitation on no new patrons to the, to enter the existing establishment after 1:00 a.m. and a last call for alcohol at 1:30 a.m. In addition, there is a limitation on the closure of windows and doors for the existing establishment at, after 10:00 p.m. Staff is recommending that the outdoor dining patio be limited from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The project includes alcohol service both to the interior and the outdoor dining patio through the continued use of a existing type 47 ABC license. The site itself is located in Reporting District 15, which has high concentration of ABC licenses and higher crime rates. Therefore, the police department has reviewed the project and does not have any objection to the patio request except for the proposed closing hour of 2:00 a.m. They are recommending the 11:00 p.m. closing hour. A memo from the police department was provided, and there were conditions of approval that are incorporated into the draft resolution. And if approved, the applicant must obtain a operator's license from the police department. Notably, the conditional use permit includes several different conditions that were not previously part of the existing entitlements for the site. So a few of those that we're highlighting here today include just the limitations on hours with the proposed recommendation of 11:00 p.m. for the closure of the outdoor dining patio. In addition, the inclusion of a requirement for the operator's license, which isn't previously included, a limitation on live entertainments and dancing is not being allowed, and then, as mentioned before, the closing of the windows and doors of the existing facility after 10:00 p.m. Staff provided a memo to the Planning Commission in form of additional materials earlier today revising condition number 7, 15, 16, 34, and 45. In addition to that, staff is also recommending, or we revise, Condition Approval 39, which speaks to the closure of the door and the windows for the establishment, just to clarify intent that the closure is for the existing establishment, not so much for the windows that don't have the ability to close in the outdoor patio. Staff is recommending we conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA under Class 1 and Class 5, and adopt Resolution Number PC 2024-012 with the recommended revised conditions of approval to approve the project. Staff has received several letters of support and several letters of, or against the project, and those have been provided to the planning commissioners via additional materials. That concludes my presentation. I am available for questions, and the applicant is also here and ready to give a presentation to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar. Well done. No, it's great. Commissioners, why don't we start with any questions of staff? Oh, why don't I start down there and I'll look back up. So Commissioner Bartow, any questions?
I guess I'm just reviewing this for the first time, the modifications. I don't know if they were shared before, so I might circle back as I'm looking at these. But I did have a question on a condition, there were a couple of conditions that appeared, or there was one condition that appeared to be repeated. Condition 26 and condition 15. Did that get revised in that to remove one of them?
So we did strike out condition 15 on the red line strikeout version, the new version.
Yeah, sorry about that. And then, I guess the new condition 29, which was condition 30. Question just on food service, I know that, that seems kind of atypical in restaurants that I've, and bars that I've been in. Is it food service, like what, what, I guess I just would be curious as to qualify what's meant by food service, if it's limited menus or how that works would be one of my questions.
Any type of limited menu would be okay with the police department. We just want to retain the characteristics of a restaurant and not allow it to become a bar or a club at night.
Gotcha, thanks. Those are mine.
Okay, questions? Vice Chair, or Chair, was he, Vice Chair was he?
Just quickly, can staff just give us a real high level on what exactly and how an operator's license works?
Forgive me, I actually brought a note on that. So the operator license is, it runs with a business owner instead of running with the land like a use permit does. Police Department has an opportunity to condition additional conditions if necessary. It can be only more restrictive, not less restrictive than what the use permit allows.
Commissioner Harris? I guess a question on a follow-up that on operator's license. With this operator, has PD ever, ever provided any additional restrictions, given the history in the city and the other establishments this operator operates? Have there been any additions ever added on?
With this particular operator?
Correct.
Yes. Stag Bar has had some additional restrictions in the past regarding occupancy or security concerns. A security plan also is provided with that operator license?
Okay, right. Commissioner Lingford?
Thank you, Chair Elmore. Mr. Orozco, I'm looking at condition 14, so the noise generation, and probably because we're hyper attuned to this, because we've just been doing the general plan update and looking in the airport area, but I remember that the Newport Boulevard is kind of surrounding Newport Boulevard, it has its own kind of 65 CNEL zone, and the noise generation limits noise from a commercial property like this to 60. So I'm just curious, operationally and kind of code enforcement-wise, how we would look at that in the future, being on a noisy road, and then also trying to limit the noise coming from a restaurant like this?
So Commissioner Lingford, I'll go ahead and take that question. So it is always challenging for code enforcement to do the sound measurement. So code enforcement actually goes out to a site if there is a complaint, and we do take, we do use a sound meter reading. We do measure the ambient noise and determine whether the ambient noise is exceeding our noise standard or it's under the, under that. They are, and forgive me, I don't know all the procedures, but they, they do go up to the property line, they do have specific areas where they do take the measurements. And it is based on their professional judgment with a sound meter. It's always challenging when you have a noisy area, and sometimes the, the ambient noise exceeds the noise level.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Commissioner Bartow, at this point? Okay, none. All right, see none. Ex parte communications, I'll start down with Commissioner Bartow.
I spoke with the applicant.
Okay.
His representative?
I spoke with the applicant, discussed the merits of the property.
I met with the applicant and his representative?
I met with the applicant.
His representative?
I spoke with the applicant, his representative.
I spoke with the applicant, his representative.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. I believe the applicant has a presentation.
Is there a PowerPoint clicker? I'm going to tell you one, okay. I just want to clarify the question about have any additional restrictions been put on my businesses as per the operator's license? And I, I believe the answer was the additional restrictions were when I was applying for new CUPs and not really as a result of the operator's license being used as a tool to add restrictions.
Oh, thank you for that clarification. Thank you for that clarification.
Well, good evening. I want to thank the Planning Commission of Newport Beach for allowing me to speak tonight. And I'd like to just take a quick moment to thank the city staff. The Planning Department worked very diligently on this 120-page staff report, and I know they worked very hard to get this done, and it wasn't easy, so for that, I thank you. My name is, next slide. My name is Mario Morovic. I've been living in Newport Beach for approximately 25 years. I'm married to my wife, Ashley, two young daughters, Grace and Kate. As a matter of fact, right now, as we speak, my daughter's eighth-grade graduation party is at Moldans, and after this, we're going there. She has graduated from Carden Hall. I did my undergraduate studies at USC. I studied entrepreneurship. I wrote my senior business plan and actually opening up a restaurant tavern in 1996. I got my MBA from USC in 2000, went to work in Silicon Valley, the Silicon Valley Bank, no longer here. And I, you know, that old saying rang true, you don't know what you have until it's gone. I miss the hospitality industry, being a second-generation restaurateur. I quit my job banking, moved back to Orange County. I took my life savings, and I invested in my first restaurant after leaving Silicon Valley. I currently own and manage multiple restaurants in the Newport Beach area. I'm a long-term partner of the city of Newport Beach. We're involved in community endeavors. A few months ago, we hosted a police department outreach at Dory Deli. I believe they call it the mobile cafe. We set up a station, we brought the Newport Beach police dog, we brought horses, and it gave the community an opportunity to come down there and talk to the first responders and, and just kind of build a stronger community. Last October, we hosted Newport Beach's first AVP professional volleyball tournament partnered with Eagle Four. We host regular beach cleanups. We're committed to improving and maintaining the city's quality of life. I believe this is evident in the businesses and properties that we currently own throughout and around Newport Beach. One thing a lot of these properties had in common, they had owners that let them get run down, and doing nothing was their business model until we took over and renovated them and made them better. I currently employ approximately 1,000 people at 16 locations throughout Orange County. I received the key to the city in 2023. I was the Newport Beach Business Person of the Year in 2022. I was the Restaurant Operator of the Year by the Orange County Business Journal in 2021. I was the Costa Mesa Small Business Owner of the Year in 2018. And one thing that we didn't mention is, at one point, I was on the front page of the Wall Street Journal for my creative marketing ideas and hospitality. I invested millions of dollars on interior and exterior improvements throughout multiple properties in Newport Beach, surrounding Newport Beach. I authored a very detailed security plan, and the security plan is something that I offered up when I was doing a Stag Bar CUP application. And the city of Newport Beach and the police department liked it so much, it thought it was a great idea, and now it's used as a template for every business operator who wants to operate late night hours past 11:00 p.m. Why are we here? Continued lounge groups, enhancements, and long-term investments in the Newport Peninsula. Specifically, I'm seeking an approval to invest in and improve an existing business in a building, its patio, and interior and exterior renovations. A little background on me and the Malarkey's business. I bought the business in 2010. In 2012, I bought the business, not the land. In 2012, I acquired a lease on the vacant lot next door that was a previous gas station. It had a chain-link fence, it was a weed garden, and collected a lot of trash. I wasn't required to develop that for any part of my operation. I signed a lease on it, spent hundreds of thousands of dollars building that nice parking lot on the 30th Street side so Malarkey can have a better curb appeal and better path of travel. In 2021, we started talking to the city staff about the project we're here for tonight. The reason why we're here in 2024 is because the business sits on three parcels. And because I had a lease on the property, we were working with the existing property owner to be able to build a patio across a property line, which is not allowed by the municipal code. The property owner was very supportive in me getting this project approved, but because they manage a large family trust, they weren't capable of altering property lines on a property that they're, that they own because they don't want to do anything that can hinder an existing property as a fiduciary due to the trust. But because they respected me as a tenant and they believed in this project, they said, why don't you buy the property? And my dream came true. We bought the Malarkey's property in December 2023, which is now allowing us to move forward and merge that one lot and adjust the lot lines so we can move forward with the project. Currently, there's no operator's license issued by the police department. There's no required security plan. There's unusable interior square footage, approximately 2,000 feet of the interior footage is not being utilized. We have a temporary COVID patio and no fire sprinklers. The Malarkey's building is shielded from the community. The rear building has a wall that's about 25 feet tall that's housed by the Pavilion's grocery store. The wall along the side of the property where Chipotle is is about 20 feet tall with a massive parking lot right in front of it. We're about 220 feet on the other side of the wall, the bamboo hedge and the eight-foot block wall to the nearest resident. And this is important because if you look at where the patio is going to be placed, we're proposing a permanent wood roof structure. By roof structure, I don't mean if a fabric awning. We're building a solid plywood roof that's going to be decorative to match the front eyebrow that Malarkey's already has. We hired the Hatch Design Group, one of the top design firms in Orange County, second-generation design firm in Newport Beach that did Watergrill, they did, you know, a bunch of really high-end quality concepts, and they're doing this remodel here, interior and exterior. Next slide, please. This project means so much to me that last month, I actually flew it to Dublin, Ireland. I was gone for four days, 20 hours in the air, three days on the ground. We visited approximately 100 properties. We went to approximately 30 pubs. We wanted to really get engrossed in the proper Irish traditional pub culture. We weren't just looking at properties that were restaurants. So one of the top right is actually a retail store that I just thought was really cool. We're getting, you know, really nice architectural ideas that we want to bring to the exterior of Malarkey's Irish Pub. Next slide, please. The interior of Malarkey's is currently warm and cozy. People love it. But as part of the expansion, we want to make sure that we refine that a little bit. Malarkey's has a lot of original mahogany woodwork from 1976 when it was built, and our idea is to have something similar to what's on the screen now, similar color scheme, refined wood detail, and just make it feel warm, cozy, but try and find a way with the Hatch Design Group to tie in that traditional Newport Beach feel. The proposed project's going to cost approximately $1.5 million, but that's in addition to the millions of dollars we had to spend by the land. We want to amend the CUP, add a CDP, and allow a 1,347-square-foot patio with about 1,200 feet of net public area and remodel the interior of the space as well as the exterior space. But ultimately, the gross floor area for the building is going to reduce from 5,032 to 4,850, which actually makes the property more, more conforming. Obviously, when Oscar mentioned the parcel maps, we're going to merge two lots and adjust one. We're asking for a one-stall parking waiver, supported by the parking study. We want to, we're proposing to keep the existing hours of operation, want to install fire sprinklers, want to add an operator's license, a security plan. But most importantly, what we want to offer is a 1:00 in the morning egress only. Nobody enters the building after 1:00 in the morning. Currently, there's nothing restricting Malarkey's Irish Pub from holding a line all the way up until 1:30, 1:45 in the morning and keeping a full room all the way up until 2:00 in the morning when they close and having everybody exit at the exact same time. What we're proposing is 1:00 in the morning egress only, and this is a proven model that works because it's on the Stag Bar CUP. And what we found is between 1:00 and 1:30, with nobody allowed to come inside, the building ends up being half-empty within 30 minutes. Even 1:30 and 1:45, it's almost 100% empty after that. The concern about having everybody vacate at the same time is now mitigated. Next slide. We have a proven security plan with one security personnel per 50 customers. We're going to require a radio headsets, video surveillance, keep a daily log of all activities and all bar and service employees with state of California LEEDs class certified. I think on the, on the first bullet point, I missed that the guard card certified as well. And this is going to be entitled and part of the business going forward in perpetuity. Next slide. We did a professional parking study with RK Engineering. The parking study showed that there is sufficient parking at all times, even during peak hours. The site lends itself to shared parking because of close proximity to public parks, public parking lots, public transit, walking, bicycling, ride-sharing. And if you read some of the, some of those support emails that came in, most of them stated that they walk, bike, or take alternate means of transportation to come to Malarkey's. Actually, most of them walk there. And as Oscar mentioned, we're going to provide a park, a 11-stall bike rack as well to mitigate the one-stall parking deficit. Next slide. Currently, Malarkey's Irish Pub has 20 conditions of approval. As a 2:00 a.m. closing, like I mentioned, they can let people into the building up until 1:55 in the morning and keep the room 100% full and let everybody out at the same time. There's no operator's license, there's no life safety fire sprinklers. The proposal has 78 conditions of approval. Keep in mind, one of those conditions of approval is the security plan, which on its own has about a dozen conditions of approval. So 78 plus the security plan has its own procedures. And with the operator's license, the 1:00 egress only, and the fire sprinklers, we feel that it's a winning recipe. Next slide. In conclusion, the patio is being constructed to minimize noise and enhance visual appearance. The entire building and property will be improved at considerable expense. I've got a proven long-term track record in the community. We own and operate multiple venues with the same permit, and we are here for the long haul. We want to make a positive impact on the community going forward. Next slide. And before I finish my presentation, I did notice that the audience has a lot of people with green hats, and after we're done with questioning, and I'm willing to limit the public comments on the support side if, to be mindful of everyone's time here. So if I'm, if I'm needed, we're willing to minimize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the time in the meeting where I typically ask if the applicant agrees to the recommended conditions. I see that's probably not going to be the case, given the fact that we just discovered here, or just discussed right here. So can we just talk about the, just for the record and make sure that I'm clear on my notes and this body in terms of the conditions in which you are looking to modify?
We want to revise condition number 12 to read as follows. The hours of operation for the outdoor patio shall be 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., obviously complying with the 1:00 egress only. Revision to the outdoor music, we want to revise condition number 34 to allow for pre-recorded music and outdoor television on the patio as long as we comply with the noise standards. And the rest of it's pretty detailed. You have it in front of you. The operator of the facility shall be responsible for the control of noise generated by the subject facility, including but not limited to noise generated by patrons, food service operations, mechanical equipment. All noise generated by proposed use shall comply with the provisions of NBMC Chapter 10.26, Community Noise Control and Other Applications and Other Applicable Noise Control Requirements of the NBMC. Pre-recorded music or televisions may be played in the tenant's space, indoor and patio, provided exterior noise levels outlined below are not exceeded. The noise generated by the proposed use shall comply with the NBMC Chapter 10.26. The noise generated by the proposed use shall comply with the NBMC Chapter 10.26. And the last one was something Mr. Commissioner Bartow already touched on was food service. We are a bona fide eating establishment. As approved by the ABC, we are required to have full course meals. And the food service till 2:00 in the morning, we had this on another project that recently with the city is after the bona fide eating establishment closes, just having some sort of food available, not the full kitchen open, but prepackaged food, snacks, and stuff like that. That would be food service, and that's once the kitchen closes and we've complied with the ABC code.
Okay. So if I was to repeat that, it's conditions number 12, 34, and 30. Is that correct?
Yes.
High-level summary. Great.
And then the clarification of food.
And then the clarification. Okay. Understood. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment to people in the audience. Just by a quick raise of hands, for people not in support of this project, please raise your hand. Great. Not, N-O-T, not in support of this, please raise your hand. Okay, that's fine. Excuse me. And everybody else, I, please keep the comments in the back quiet because we have a meeting to run, so I appreciate that. Why don't we start with this, with the people not in support of that, and then I'll go to the people in support of that from that order? So I appreciate that. Thank you. Please state your name for the record and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Good evening. My name is Matt Tanner. I've been a resident for about six years at Newport Beach. We've owned this property for about 30 years, so we've had three decades of watching the bar culture on our residents. So you could throw a baseball, a small kid could throw a baseball from Malarkeys to the residence where we live. And I have no doubt that Mario is a good man and he's a business person. I spoke to him, we looked eye to eye, he told me he's got a plan for all this. But the problem that we have, and that I have, is a citizen who's lived here and been woken up at 1 o'clock, 1:30, 2:00 in the morning by the typical bar culture that nobody can fix because it's just, it is what it is. We all know that. We've all done it. But when it's in your residential neighborhood and you're getting up in the morning and you're working and you're raising children, and there's people walking through your neighborhood screaming and yelling at 1 o'clock in the morning until 2:00, waking you up, the trouble that we have is taking this is a cluster screw right now. So we're going to take this cluster screw where we've got people walking through our alleys, waking people up, starting fights, getting in fights, cops having to come and fix it, the typical neurosis of bar behavior. We're going to get, it's that way now. So when we get more people in there, and it lasts for longer, and people are swirling alcohol for longer periods of time, for three hours at a time, longer than they already were, we're going to get a bigger cluster screw. And no matter what Mario does, and I know he's professional and I know he knows what he's doing, I don't doubt that at all. I don't doubt his, that he's a good community person and a good father and a good husband and all those things, and they're all, that's all great. But we have, we the people who have these houses that are worth over $2 million, have to deal with bar people screaming and yelling in our neighborhood till 2:00 AM. Now, if this happens later, we're going to have people leaving bars in groups and droves from, not just from 12 to 1, but it's going to be from 12 to probably 3:00 because it's 12 to 1 now. So there's nothing that they can do to fix that. They can't have security people tell them not to go down our street, and there's nothing that can fix it. And that's the problem. I don't have a problem with him expanding, but the problem is, is that's more people that are going to be piling out of into our neighborhood. And a little kid could throw a baseball to where the rest of all these people are paying taxes, trying to work, trying to raise children, women and children, trying to have Newport Beach culture. And I understand that Mario wants to get the Irish culture down in Newport Beach, but there's also Newport Beach culture, which people like to sleep and they like to get up and go to work, likes to raise their children. That's our concern.
Thank you. Next speaker that is in opposition of this, please come forth.
Chair Almar and members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I don't know that I'm in opposition or in favor. I just had a couple of points I wanted to make. First, I understand you get reports on what happens at the zoning administrator meeting. And last Thursday, the zoning administrator, only time I've seen them do this, denied an application, which was for a small off-sale wine and beer permit at a location near to this. The reason for the denial was the extremely high concentration of opportunities to use and consume alcohol already in this area. And that applicant thought they were being treated unfairly because of all these other applications that get approved for on-sale alcohol. And so here again, we're approving an expansion of alcohol use in the area where it's already highly concentrated. And that person who got their application denied is probably going to be feeling even more abused than they felt last week. The second comment I wanted to make is about the parking and the finding in here that there is no spillover parking from this operation. The slide in the staff report said even at the peak time, well, first must be obvious to you, the place where the outdoor patio is going was previously parking. So you're substantially enlarging the operation while taking parking away. And it was claimed that even at the peak time, the lot was never full, there were still three locations open. And I think that's referring to this diagram on page 97. And the only green dots of unoccupied spaces are the 388 locations. So actually, the lot was totally full, and anyone who was not handicapped would not find any parking place there. And another thing I noticed, being who I am, I tried to add up the dots here and they don't add up to the 40-something. So I'm curious how many parking spaces there actually are. And there's two cars shown here that never have a dot or X over them, so I don't know in the parking analysis, are those still spaces or not? But even including those, it doesn't add up to the 46. So I don't quite know what's going on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers opposed to this item?
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Drew Weatherholt. I'm a resident of 30th Street. Been on 30th Street for more than 35 years. I own multiple properties up and down the peninsula, both residential and commercial. This discussion's not about Mario. Mario's a great guy. He's done a lot of good things for his city. My hat's off to him. You saw the resume. We spent five minutes on the resume. The big issue here that's not being addressed is the occupancy. Patio, everybody wants an outdoor patio. That's not a big issue. The big issue is when that patio is open after 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM. The noise, the debauchery, the people that get dumped into our neighborhood, you've heard some of that already, you've seen the photographs that I provided, are extreme. You know, a couple of things I do want to address. Mario's had four years to do this. We got four days' notice on this. I would have loved to have done a presentation like what Mario's done, would have kind of been a little bit different. I would have showed you accidents, blood, we even have deaths. We just had a 14-year-old die of a drunk driver. Last weekend, we had my neighbor's car totaled on our street in front of my house by a drunk driver. Did that drunk driver come from Malarkeys? I don't know. Couple of things I'd like to address. You guys got 40, 50 letters in support of this. I went through those letters and noticed that only two of those letters are people that are within a quarter-mile radius of the subject. Two of those people, one of those people that is in support does live on 30th Street, but he gets free parking at Malarkeys. The other one predominantly spends most of his time up in Newport Heights. Clearly, you can see a lot of those letters are form letters. I appreciate that support, but again, what most of those people don't realize is what happens from 10:00 to 2:00 AM in our neighborhood. It is absolutely debaucher. I could show you videos. The stuff that I showed you is just the tips of the iceberg.
Excuse me. Quiet, please. Back there.
Yesterday afternoon, I just found out through an email through planning, this bar is going to increase potentially from 151 people to 391. I had communications, Oscar finally got back to me. This is an increase of 240 people that potentially will be intoxicated, that get dumped into our community on the peninsula. There was nothing in the public notice about this, there was nothing in the planning report about this, or the police memo. When I spoke to Wendy Jo, because I called her, she got back to me at 5:30 yesterday evening and says she wasn't necessarily aware of that. It's not her fault because this wasn't in the planning report. I find it very abnormal that we're dealing with adding a building structure to an existing building that we don't know what the occupancy is going to be before we build it. We're putting the cart before the horse. That's very disturbing, very concerning. What is the occupancy of this? I still don't have a right number for it. Simone told me we're probably talking about 50 additional people. Based on what I finally saw on the plan, on the 148th page of the staff report was 391. And I had to use a magnifying glass to see that. I mean, what is the occupancy? What is going to be the proposed occupancy? Right now, the police department cannot deal with the 151 people that come out there, the other people that come out of that. I would request more time for my residents because Mario had 15 minutes to speak. Is that okay?
No, it's not. Thank you very much. I have a meeting to run, I have a lot of people I want to talk. You've had your three minutes of public comment, I appreciate it, and all your notes are well heard. Thank you very much. Next speaker in opposition, please.
Good evening. My name is Lou Burgess. I live on 30th Street. My address is actually 220 30th Street. Mario, I heard your name several times, and by the way, you make a very, very good prime rib sandwich, and it's a pleasure to meet you. I do object entirely. As a matter of fact, I have a question for all of you. Do any of you live on 30th Street? Any of you? I want to invite you to my home. Open invitation, and come and listen to the noise between 10:00 PM and 2:00 AM. I'm going to be 67 years old in just a few months. My sleep is important. I can't do things with my family on the weekends because of lack of sleep. As a matter of fact, May 11th in 2022, pounding on my door, a young lady just left the bar, come in my front door, pounding, and she wanted to come in, and puked on my doorstep. On Saturday mornings, we're out there with my neighbors cleaning up the glass, cleaning up the urine, cleaning up the puke. I really invite you, you need to see this with your own two eyes and listen with your ears. It is, if I knew that it was really going to be that bad, I probably wouldn't have moved there in the first place or bought the property. I do give credit to Mario, he has an MBA degree. I don't. I just, this is common sense. Common sense in saying you can't put that many quantity of a people in a small area. It just doesn't work. The rideshare stop in front of the bars, parking? I want to know who actually did the survey. Really? Who did the survey? I don't know, but it's inaccurate. I've lived there. I see this on a daily basis. I see it on the weekends. My vet bill, Lido Vet, right across the street from Malarkeys in my home, I've been there three or four times because my German Shepherd got cut on her paws with the glass in the parking lot or in the alley. What people don't understand is Mario has a very good plan as far as security is concerned, but he has no control when they go into the streets. And he has no control when they go into the alleys. He has no control when they damage our cars or urinate against our fence or our backyard or garage. Yes, Malarkey does a great job, but like I said, there's no control after the people leave the bar. What is he going to do? Get a rope and rope and it's, guys, you got to go to your car. No. They go down to the beach for a make-out session, they come back, they're drunk, they're hitting the signs. Just two weeks ago, I was outside waiting for one of my guests that went to Disneyland. Just in a period of five minutes, I saw, and these people, it's not one or two people, they come in groups, 10 and 12, 15 at a time. They're very loud, very boisterous, extremely. As a matter of fact, I have to shut my patio door because my dog just barks and barks.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you.
Next speaker in opposition, please.
Hi, my name's Kimberly Vandenacre. I live on 29th Street, and my family's owned our property for more than 50 years. We have frequented Malarkeys numerous times and Country Club and Deli Dory. We run Airbnbs and we send our guests to these establishments many times. We believe there's a value there, and you are offering the community more than just employees and tax revenues and that sort of thing. So we do appreciate you, Mario. At the same time, I agree with Drew and Lou, when folks leave Malarkeys, and it could be, what's it called? Helmsman or another establishment where there's a lot of drinking going on late at night, they go through our alleys and our bedrooms are right up against that alley, okay? If you all knew what we've been through in the last five years on that alley, between bringing the electricity underground, which has nothing to do with Mario, and now we're looking at another construction project, the noise, I really feel like I live in an inner city. I worked in Los Angeles for 30 years as a public sector employee. I understand how these meetings go. Los Angeles was quieter than Newport Beach. And I don't know what you weigh, this feels a little bit David Goliath to me, like you already have, you've met with him individually. You reported that. I don't know if you have a bias, if you can have an open mind. This gentleman brings in a lot of revenue to the city, I understand that. I don't even think the folks that are in favor here are the people that we're concerned about. We have folks come in from the inland empire, in droves, to come to Malarkeys. It's a famous spot. They like to be seen in the line, okay? That makes everyone feel excited and they take the selfies and we're at Malarkeys. I get that. My kids have been to Malarkeys, my father's been. I mean, our family's spent so much money in Malarkeys, I can't believe it. But at the same time, what are we doing here? We don't need more of the same. We have enough places to eat and drink. We need our resources, we need folks like you looking at ways to improve the quality of life for all your citizenry, not just the folks that like sports and beer, but everybody, the folks that want to run. And they can't because there's electric bikes all over the boardwalk. You know, for families, I used to take my kids to Malarkeys, and now I can't take my grandkids because if they're eating pancakes, they're hearing the F-word all the time. The culture has changed in the bars. It truly has. And I just ask for you to hear us. Yes, you know, this fine gentleman, yes, he's done good things for our city, but we as taxpayers, we count as well. And we cannot be continually woken up at these hours from, you know, 10:00 PM to 2:00, it's after 2:00. It's generally 2:15. We have sex in our alleys, we have fights, lots of arguments from people walking through. It's a very, it's a very difficult quality of life when you add in the motorcycles and the helicopters and everything else.
Thank you, Kimberly. Next speaker in opposition, please.
Thank you. My name's John Vandenacre. I'm on 29th Street also. And we just found out about this, we're on 29th Street, and then calling the planning, we weren't within the 300 yards, but, so it didn't concern us, I thought. I'm a simpleton, I got two ears, two eyes, and it does concern me because I see it, I hear it. As our neighbor Lou was saying, yeah, there are fights all the time. I just don't, again, I'm a simpleton, I just don't get it. If there was a time that we can, a think tank that we can kind of come up with this, and again, we do live it. There's fights, there's just throw-up. I stopped going out and seeing because I'd get like, you know, threatened. But, you know, I hear people jimmying the gate, trying to, they're just drunk. Again, fantastic. We always send our guest over to his establishments. That's not the issue. The issue are the late hours. What could be done about it? What can we all get together and say, who's going to give, who's going to take, or what can we do together as a community? That's what I'm asking for. You know, to either posit and then come up with some better solutions or more time for us to say, hey, this is going to work, or this isn't going to work. I've seen it not work, but again, that's just, you know, we live on 29th Street, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Next speaker in opposition, please. Next speaker in opposition, please. And folks in opposition, and for the folks that are going to come up and talk pro for it, I do encourage everybody, please to, when we hear the facts and the matters that you're talking about, we appreciate that. If we hear it again and again and again, it doesn't make a difference in terms of, for us, so please do your best, if you could, to, you know, any new information would be really appreciated by this body. Thank you, and for everybody on the other side as well, when you come up.
Hi, I'm Linda, and I live on Thirty, thirteen years now.
Hi, Linda.
I walk my dogs in the mornings. I have to deal with the paws, the broken glass. I personally, neighbors sweep off Newport Boulevard, the alley, and the permit lot right there. They put cones on the cars, which I take off, some of my friends' cars. They break the mirrors going down the streets. They just break the mirrors on every car. The noise level from twelve to two, same thing, my bedroom is in the alley. You just can't sleep. The dogs start barking. It's very difficult. If you work at six-thirty in the morning, you've got to get up and pull it together and go to work. It was my car that was hit. My car was given, it was a Lexus LS, given to me before my mom died because we were a car family. It was very important to her. It had a hundred and twenty thousand miles. I figure I'd have it ten years. It's destroyed. Felt like my mom dying all over again. So it's, I'm concerned that the noise level that's from twelve to two is going to be now from twelve to four. I mean, we got to work, we got to figure this out. It's, as a community, it's hard. I'm questioning whether maybe we need to move. I mean, but it's the same, we all have the same problem. It's not fair to us that they aren't getting sleep or our dogs are getting injured. My grandson had to watch somebody pee on the wall. It's like, you know, it's a throw up. I walk my dogs, and I got to pull them back from trying to eat all the vomit on the sidewalks or in the parking lot, so I'm just concerned it's going to get worse. That's my concern, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. Next speaker in opposition, please. Okay, seeing none. Why don't we go, speakers on the other side of the House, please? State your name for the record. And the time limit's three minutes, sir.
Sure. Corey Kramer. I'm a Newport Beach resident, business owner of multiple businesses here in the city and a former planning commissioner for the city of Newport Beach for eight years. So I approach these things, you know, with multiplicity of perspectives. First of all, I mean, it's clear. The applicant, you know, has a proven track record, and the city should support good operators, bottom line. Mario does have a proven track record on that across the board, and that has been discussed here this evening already. So I'd like to talk a little bit more about some of the technical items. You know, I think that as you read through the conditions of approval in the staff report and look at, you know, it from a holistic perspective to see what, you know, what staff is recommending versus what, you know, Mario is suggesting, it seems to me, when you look through, you can make the findings to support the expansion of the patio for late night from seven to two with that one A M. egress. It's worked successfully at other establishments. It can always be pulled back if it doesn't. And being in hospitality, patios are important, right? And so I don't understand necessarily why the staff is recommending a ten P M. closure on nights when there is no sound issue. There needs to be, you know, a, across the board, way to measure this, and it should be done by sound, not necessarily by time. So I think that's an important thing to consider because people like to have the ability to have that patio experience. There's a question that came up, and I'm not sure what the answer was, is, you know, these sound studies for the decibel readings to monitor noise levels, where are they measured from? And I think there needs to be some clarification on that because the conditions of approval don't speak to where they're measured from. Look, I mean, this has always been a difficult area in the city. It is a mixed-use area. It's not a residential district. It's a mixed-use district with commercial as an important component of that. It is by the beach, so you're going to have a lot of different people and things happen. But it's not primarily a residential district that needs to, that's something that needs to be stated clearly for the record. This is a mixed-use district with a commercial core that's been there since the beginning of the city, so we're talking more than a hundred years. So this is not something that's new, and so that needs to be part of the, part of the fact pattern of understanding in terms of making these fact findings that you have before you tonight. So in conclusion, I support the applicant, and I hope that those clarification or modification items that I suggested can be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Steve Rosansky, President and CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce and former City Councilman, Anawes Newport Beach resident. I don't want to be redundant of some of the things Corey just mentioned, but I will point out that as I sat on City Council, I think twelve, thirteen years ago, I saw Mario came with a similar project. Actually, the project being presented tonight is significantly better than that, and I was willing to approve that at the time. He's proven himself to be a great operator here in town, bought multiple properties and upgraded them. I think the facility itself, which we haven't really talked about much, is going to have significant upgrades, fire sprinklers, a major renovation. The operator's license, I think, is a big thing as well. That's something actually Mario went and agreed to twelve, thirteen years ago, so he's involved in his outlook on the property and what he needs to do in order to be a good operator in town. So he's been a big supporter of the Chamber of Commerce, big supporter of community events. I also think it's important to reward quality operators. I mean, that's the only way we're going to get quality people here in town is if we nurture them, and so I would encourage you to support the action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Nathan Holthauser. I'm a resident, I'm a homeowner on Seventh Street on the Peninsula, involved in various nonprofit organizations in the city, love living on the Peninsula. I'm in massive support of this project. I was thirteen years ago, and this one is much better. I do want to point out some things that haven't been talked about yet. I own a commercial real estate firm in the city where we manage a lot of stakeholders' buildings that own various businesses. These businesses are not easy to run, and an establishment that's been around this long is not easy to do. It's what makes our city have some identity. Like, I wrote in an email to city staff that, you know, I personally know of three close friends who have met their significant others and gotten married from Malarkey's. It is a staple of the community, but that doesn't, that's not a privilege. It's not something that just comes easily. This will, in my opinion, drastically enable the applicant to keep this establishment going forward in the future, which to me is extremely important as a stakeholder, as a patron, as a resident, as somebody who enjoys it. And I will say that I've heard, you know, some obvious negative comments about the drinking. That does happen. I live on Seventh Street, not near the bars. That happens at my house. I have earplugs. I give earplugs to my family when they come and stay in the summertime. My mom is extremely light sleeper. I give her earplugs and she sleeps like a baby, so that's one solution, just FYI. Yeah, so anyways, I just wanted to point out that, you know, we see a lot of businesses fail, and it's because they're not supported by the city, and we have an applicant who's been responsible, so please, please support this applicant and approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Council and Planning Commission. My name's Wayne Smith. I'm a local businessman of over thirty years, lived here for thirty years. I want to bring it to your attention that I fully support. But in the patio on Malarkey's, aesthetically, you drive down the street, that whole community area needs a serious upgrade. Aesthetically, this will be a beautiful, beautiful upgrade for the entire community. Although I sympathize with the residents that are opposed to it, this happens all over the entire peninsula. It happens by my house, I live away from the bars, it happens by other properties, and it just happens. It's very unfortunate. You can't find a better operator that's going to work harder, better, or work with the community better than Mario has with all of the projects he has with the city. So supporting his move to bring a beautiful patio aesthetically and his game plan that he's brought to the community about filtering people, stopping people from coming in later and filtering out later, bringing that plan to the city without the city bringing it to him, you could tell that he really wants to work with the community and make it better at the same time. So I encourage you, I encourage you, look at, at the end of the day, when you're driving down Newport Boulevard, how beautiful it's going to look and what he's going to do for the community, to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Next speaker, please.
I don't normally wear a hat. My head's too big here, but tonight I will for Mario. I'm a fellow property owner on the Peninsula. My name is John Palmer. I want to support Mario as a great operator in the city and someone I want to partner with further in, as we endeavor on making the Peninsula better for everyone. So thank you for your support in this project.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Micah Shizel. I'm speaking in support. I am a regional manager within the lounge group. I've worked with Mr. Morovic for the past six and a half years. I can speak very favorably of how we run our company. We have a very rich heritage of hospitality. We ensure that all, everybody who works for us are security guards who we actually call host greeters. They don't just enforce, hey, don't do this, don't do that. They welcome people, and we ensure we don't over-serve people. And some of these, I would say, complaints that are being brought up, I would, you know, argue that those are not coming from Malarkey's. You know, we ensure, as Mario has presented, that if we have an egress at one A M., then people will filter out slowly and actually will help alleviate some of this bottleneck as other bars do not follow such stringent security plan. So I do think that those additional restrictions will certainly add to a more safer and less foot traffic as Malarkey's closes as well. I think it's very important that we reward good operators who want to reinvest in their own facilities. Before Mario owned the company, that corner was a bit of an eyesore. I grew up in the area, went to Ensign, Newport Harbor High, would go surfing. The whole Peninsula had some eyesores, you know, going along the boardwalk from Newport Pier all the way down to, I think, about Twenty-Fourth Street, and we have routinely reinvested money into the area to show not just that we care about the area, that we're trying to build a lasting partnership with the city. And I think that allowing us for the approval of the patio would show that good operators should be reinvesting. I don't know if anybody has gone down and looked at that Peninsula Lounge on Newport Boulevard. It's turning into a weed garden. Those are people that didn't know how to run, you know, a very well-thought business, and it's turning into an eyesore for the entire Peninsula at this point. So thank you, and I really hope that you consider this.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any more speakers, so at this time, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the applicant if he would like to respond to any of the comments that were made.
I'd just like to echo some of the earlier comments. I feel the benefits of the project are currently with Malarkey's Irish Pub being open till two o'clock in the morning with no restrictions on how many people are able to enter the business after one o'clock in the morning, where the plan will alleviate the situation where anybody can have a full business and push everybody out into the street at the exact same time. That one o'clock egress-only plan, that's a proven plan, that's already been approved and put in practice, the stag bar works. And if for some reason it doesn't work, we have an operator's license that can come back and we can discuss it at a future time. I'd like to open the floor to any questions you might have after public comment, but yeah, I feel my presentation was pretty detailed, and the public comments summarized everything that I was concerned about.
Great, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll ask the Commissioners if they have any questions for the applicant before I close the public hearing. Commissioner Bartow, any questions?
Yeah, just to kind of repeat what you said, people are talking about things changing from twelve to two, twelve to four. The current operation of Malarkey's, it currently closes at two. My understanding is it currently operates until two, and just to clarify what you said, your request is to maintain a two o'clock closure, but changing that last hour of operation.
Yeah, the last hour of operation to be egress-only, where now we have a one-hour timeframe where we're only focused on exiting and closing over the course of an hour, whereas most establishments on the Peninsula have about a fifteen-minute timeframe where they say, last call, stop serving, one fifty-five, and now everyone has to leave between one fifty-five and two. And this one-hour slow attrition that's going to exit, it works. We're not going to have that problem.
And just to clarify also, there's a lot of discussion about broken glass. Presumably, you don't send roadies out with bottles of beer or?
No, there's no roadies, and as a matter of fact, we have security staff stationed at every door. In the security plan I mentioned earlier, there's going to be a minimum requirement of one security personnel per fifty customers. We're not in the practice of letting anybody leave the building with anything in their hand. Just to do a little backtrack, in two thousand twenty during COVID, when it was a complete shutdown in the community and City Council was on Zoom, I was watching the City Council meetings. You want to know what the number one complaint was when one hundred percent of all the bars were closed? People drinking on the beaches, in the street, leaving trash. And I remember watching those hearings thinking to myself, wow, all the bars are closed. And I remember people in City Council and city staff telling me, I can't wait for the bars to reopen because we're having more alcohol issues when everything's closed. So a lot of these issues are not coming from the bars. Some issues are coming from the bars. That's a fact. But my bar, my tavern, nobody leaves with anything in their hand. It's not allowed.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Harris.
Have you, in any of your other establishments, have you ever had a condition rescinded that was granted? For example, like we're looking at some of these, right, extra occupancy, noise complaints that therefore staff or code enforcement had to come back and then pull it back from you?
Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, Orange, Anaheim, Fullerton, I've never had a violation against me or a condition rescinded. Sixteen locations, never happened.
Commissioner Langford.
Thank you. Mr. Morovic, the one A M. egress, are you proposing that as a condition of approval or is that part of your operational plan? I just want to be clear about that.
Well, it will be a condition of approval because I think one of the seventy-eight conditions in the C U. P. is the security plan, and that is in the security plan.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Staff, thank you very much. You can have a seat. Staff, any points or any clarifications for the record before I close the public hearing?
None.
No, okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll bring this back to our body for a discussion and our motion, so we'll start with that. Commissioner Langford, do you want me to start with you?
General thoughts?
Yeah, general thoughts, discussion.
Yeah, general thoughts, discussion before potentially offering a motion. I like that we have an opportunity to modernize an old C U. P. from fifty years ago, kind of bring it into the new era with a modern operator, so I like everything I'm hearing. I'm inclined to go with the operator's request for the late-night two A M. patio usage. It sounds like if it's not going to be an audible or a noise issue, then I would be okay with that. And I do also obviously appreciate the residents in the area, so I'm sympathetic to their concerns, but it sounds like with the plan that the operator will be processing with N B. P. D. that we should be able to alleviate at least most of those concerns.
Okay, thank you. Secretary Harris.
You know, I just look at the track record, and I look at every operation that he's taken over. I feel like this is, if not the best operator in town, one of the best that has really transformed areas, especially around the pier, made, you know, really big bets in our city and invested a lot of time, effort, money, created new security apparatuses. I think there's an app that all the bars are part of, and I think it's gotten better than it used to be. I mean, this has been a bar since nineteen seventy-six. I mean, I used to live close by. I mean, I used to live close by. I think it's better now than it was, and I think it's going the right way with users like this, and I think we should trust them, that they'll do the right thing for themselves, their businesses, and our city.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yeah, Commissioner Saleen.
Just again, general thoughts. Obviously, Malarkey's has been around, as I said, almost 50 years. It's iconic in Newport. It needs a facelift. I think that the patio structure will be a nice addition to it. I like the fact that it's got a permanent roof, permanent walls, and it's got a little bit of space, obviously, for a little bit of noise to escape, but the operator will keep that under control. You know, I'm okay with the 2:00 issue because I think trying to usher people out of the patio at 11:00 back into the bar or wherever they're going to go is even more of a headache than just, you know, letting them do their thing for a period of time in a controlled environment. So I think this is a nice project and be a great redo in the city.
Vice Chair, any comments?
Yeah, just some thoughts. Excuse me, obviously, I sympathize with the folks that live in this mixed-use environment. It's been that way for as long as I can remember. This is a destination environment. This is what people go to do and be in that environment. It's unfortunate that some choose to handle it inappropriately, and, you know, we need to maybe consider how that could work, but that's not what we're talking about this evening. I think that this applicant has done wonderful things for the city. We need to continue to support this applicant. And as we start talking about the closing time, you know, my biggest concern is with 11:00 closing outside, you're suddenly trying to force people out into the street. You know, they should be allowed to remain in the building, and it's a controlled environment. I look at that as an operational challenge, so I'm supportive of the 2:00 closing time. I like the idea that this is enhancing the property, and, you know, what is being proposed is obviously an upgrade. It's an enhancement, and I think that it'll actually provide good sound attenuation with good design. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bartow.
I think a lot of what's been said is stuff that I agree with as far as some of the points, as far as closing time and operational issues. I would like to just kind of reference the empathy I have for the noise issues. Where I live, we back on Pacific Coast Highway, there's real noise constantly, and there has been since I moved there, which is over a decade at this point. You know, there's ambulances, there's fire, there's police, there's motorcycles, there's drag racing, there's all these things. And it's a mixed blessing where we live that people want to come here and be where we live, and I have, again, nothing but empathy for the noise impacts. I guess I just, as I'm looking at it, I'm not sure what's in front of us really addresses that one way or another. You know, we have a currently operating bar that operates until 2:00 with very little restriction. It's surrounded by other bars, there's liquor stores up and down the street. And, you know, it's interesting, some of the people that we're really concerned about the noise also operate Airbnbs, and which I spent time down on seashore in the last, you know, five years while we were doing construction on our house. It was a lot of fun. Our kids got to learn a lot about words and things and smells, and it's a reality of where we live. And I guess what I see before us as something to vote on, I don't think is a, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's an impact on that element of quality of life, which, again, I think is real, but I think the bars, like Malarkey's, well-operated are part of our community, and I think it's part of that mixed-use life, which is a reality. So that was just kind of my thought, you know, in my mind, how I see it.
Thank you. If this application was brought, was not brought in front of us today, I don't, any modification or what was going to be happening in the streets around in the neighborhood is going to continue to happen. What is interesting, what I really enjoy about this application are the fact that it's going to provide some guardrails around the establishment, a security management plan, an operator's license. I call those guardrails, the opportunity for this to be monitored, for it to be brought back. That's a benefit, that's a net benefit to the public, and I think it's the right thing for the establishment, and I think that's to the integrity of the operator that's trying to do the right thing to do the best that he can in operating an establishment. What happens outside of his walls is not something that he can control, and that's just the reality of it. I echo the sentiments of my fellow Commissioners, and I would be in favor of this. I am in favor of this application. I'm also in favor of the conditions that were brought forward. I think they're reasonable. I think they make sense, condition number 12, number 34, and number 30 in regards to the, you know, prepackaged food. So that's my position. If any of my colleagues would like to make a motion, great time for that.
I'd make a motion, just with the caveat that condition 34 is now condition 33 on the agenda item, on the latest revision, and that condition number 30 is now condition number 29. Beyond that, I'd make the motion.
Okay. And does that include, so that includes the modifications to condition number 12 and then condition number 34, which includes TV? We may, we could also just say that, call it amplified sound as opposed to TV and/or music. I don't know if there's a, just by definition, if that's easier as opposed to calling one or the other.
Well, the applicant has suggested television.
Okay.
So go with that.
Okay. With those conditions, and then I guess the clarification to number 30, which would be prepackaged food. Is that, is that...
That's the motion.
That's the motion, great. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Congratulations to the applicant. Folks, we're almost done here, so why don't, instead of everybody getting up, and I was pausing for a second, why don't you guys hang tight, and I'm going to go ahead and try to wrap up this meeting. Moving on, staff and Commissioners, item number three, motions for reconsideration. Are there any other motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, moving on. Item number four, report by the Community Development Director or requests for matters of which a planning commissioner would like placed on a future agenda item.
Thank you, Chair Elmore. Just to go over the next agenda item for June 20, Planning Commission meeting, we do have two items for that meeting. There are two different variances for residential homes, and then we will take a break through the first part of July, then be back with you July 18.
Great, thank you. Anybody from the audience wish to comment on the Director's report? Okay, seeing none. Commissioners, requests for excused absences?
Yeah, I'd like to request an excused absence on the 20th, please.
Okay, one request. Great, thanks. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.